We're going to call the meeting for Akron City Council to order our special meeting. At this time, we're going to ask our clerk to read the roll. Bolden?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Connor? Davis?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Garrett? Hannah?
Aye.
Kammer? Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittrick?
Aye.
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
And Wilson?
Aye.
We do have a quorum. Thank you. We do have six items up for public hearing, and we're going to ask our clerk to read in item number one. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, December 8th, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to construct a warehouse and distribution center at 2322 Manchester Road. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 22nd and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning November 19th. Ms. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. AMS 2025 BTS Akron, Ohio is requesting permission to construct an Amazon warehouse and distribution facility on this property. Petitioner is proposing to build a 387,860 square foot building with a height of 43 feet. The finished floor of the building will be set approximately 10 feet below street grade of Manchester Road. The building will be constructed of painted concrete wall panels with high windows on the Manchester Road elevation and tall windows at the corner of the building. Facility will be served by two parking lots, 155 space on the north side of the building, serving local delivery vehicles, and a 282 space parking lot on the south side of the building for employees who will be working within the building. Parking lot and site lighting will be shielded to prevent light spillover. The facility will contain 19 truck docks and four truck trailers parking spaces at the northwest corner of the building. The site will have two driveway entrances, one toward the north of the site opposite West Moreland Street to serve the local delivery vehicles, and on the southern border of the site opposite Stanford Street to serve employees and semi-truck deliveries. To buffer pedestrians from traffic on Manchester Road, the petitioner will replace the existing 10-foot wide concrete sidewalk on the west side of Manchester Road that is directly adjacent to the roadway with a five-foot wide sidewalk and a five-foot tree lawn for street trees. An eight-foot-high sound wall made of Trex composite fence material and a landscape buffer will provide, will be provided by the petitioner along the north property line adjacent to residential properties on Allenford Street and Corber Avenue. For the traffic study commissioned by the petitioner, the proposed, the facility is projected to generate 3,774 vehicle trips on a typical weekday, including 294 employee vehicles, 1,581 delivery vehicles, and 12 semi-trucks in and out of the facility. Employees would occupy the facility 24 hours a day, outgoing deliveries that would occur between 3:00 AM and 7:00 PM. The general conclusion of the traffic study is that even though traffic counts will be increased, the facility will not have a significant impact on traffic capacity on Manchester Road or to I-277 or US-224 ramps or the Wilbith Road or Waterloo Road intersections. These modifications include adjustments to signal timing at the Wilbith Road and Waterloo Road intersections to reduce existing congestion and possible changes to the traffic striping and turn lanes on Manchester Road. City of Akron Traffic Engineering will continue to work with the petitioner and ODOT to refine modifications to traffic. Petitioner is working on an agreement with neighbors to transfer a strip of land approximately 40 feet wide by 250 feet long on the northern Corber Avenue property to three property owners whose yards butt up against the site. Also, the City of Akron proposes to sell one and a half acre, one and a half acre vacant parcel on the south boundary of the project site to the petitioner because that parcel is no longer needed for municipal purposes. The sale of this land will allow the city to divest itself of maintenance obligations while returning the landlocked parcel to tax rolls. The proposed Amazon warehouse and distribution facility will help achieve the goals of the Landee's Development Guide Plan by promoting the economic viability of the Kenmore neighborhood in the city through the creation of jobs and revenue generating business activity. And both the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here in chambers or online who wishes to speak in favor or against? Thank you. We're just going to ask that you be sworn in by our clerk. Yes, also just want to make a quick note that there is a substitute offered as an amendment. It's item number eight under your new legislation. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Cody Garrison with the AMS entity. Address is 8888 Keystone Crossing, Indianapolis, Indiana. Thank you all for the time today. Thank you all for the time earlier today. I'm going to keep it slightly more brief. That's my goal here, hit some high points, and then open it up for questions if they may exist. The overall conditional use, as I think the group is well aware of, is to approve the receiving shipping and distribution uses for the particular site on Manchester Road. To provide a touch more detail on the facility type, it is a sub same day or an SSD facility in prototype. The number one goal of an SSD is to provide quicker shipping to customers. Sub same day refers to shipping in less than 24 hours, so things you can get, you know, the next morning that comes from a facility like this. Products span multiple categories, things like diapers, groceries, pharmaceuticals, if you go to the doctor and have a prescription that you need to get filled, pet products, and many things in between. I wanted to make note that this facility is very different than the Romeg Road site. That is a, that's kind of a standard type distribution facility, and this is very much a delivery type. So where Romeg Road is a ton of truck traffic, you heard Mike mention, we are a very low truck traffic user. We also, or this facility would also have no delivery vans at it. All delivery is taking place through what's called flex drivers. Flex drivers operate their own vehicles, just like we all did getting here today. Potential, you know, development operations and things that have been taken into consideration, I wanted to mention, we've been working to upgrade the east elevation to have more, you know, glass and paint and architectural features similar to a mixed-use style facility to promote inclusion into the, into the neighborhood and into the, into the area. Again, operational opportunities, so think of jobs, is going to include full-time flex time and flex delivery, so it's going to give folks the opportunity to work, you know, full-time standard 40 hours, give folks the opportunity to work flex time, which could be, you know, maybe you can only work eight hours a day, or excuse me, eight hours a week on two different days, or maybe you want to work over 40. They have the opportunities to allow folks to kind of work when they can to provide the most benefit to both parties. Development considerations, I think it was mentioned, there is a sound wall on the northeast side that's put in place to ensure despal levels are kept at the, kept at or below the appropriate levels. Additionally, there are headlight concerns at the planning commission meetings, so we have extended that wall, not continuous, but extended nonetheless, kind of on the western side of the north face to prevent more visual screening for, for truck headlights for the folks on Corber Avenue. And then the last couple of things to mention is, is the traffic. We're working with the city, Mike Lupica and others, our traffic engineers, to ensure that the traffic situation is safe for all parties, including, you know, existing residents, new folks, parents, et cetera. We're ultimately kind of willing and ready to implement whatever the final decision is from them. And then lastly, it was mentioned, the separate condition about deeding the land to the three, three landowners on, on Corber. We're working through that now. We actually have plaits kind of beginning to be drafted so that we're prepared and ready once the, once the land sale is ready to go through. So thanks, again, thanks again for the time. Try to keep it short, but happy to answer any, any questions that may exist.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. That would be Kammer, Connor, Boys?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Report of the committee is favorable. We're asking for suspension of the rules.
Are there any objections to suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
I just want to mention that the ward council person didn't wait, however created. Didn't wait, she created, and created an opportunity for the residents in the area over the course of several months, several meetings, working between not only the developers, but the planning department and others. And it, that's why here this afternoon, you, and many, many times as we know, we often see a whole bunch of folks with a huge development like this. But Tina Boys had done a just outstanding job in terms of ensuring that all voices were heard, and I want to congratulate her on that. However, I'm pretty sure she has a couple comments.
Councilwoman Boys?
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Chair. I just want to speak in favor of this publicly. It has been a few, quite a few months. Cody Garrison from Ambrose has been very much available to our community. We've had over 200 people at community meetings. First, the folks closest to the development to get their input, and I'm glad to hear we're still discussing the traffic signal at West Moreland because I think that's important for our, our children who are going to be walking to Reimer, which they also engage. So I just want to thank them for that. Thank the planning department for all of their hard work, and I'm just really excited for these opportunities, not just for folks working in the building, but for those in my community who sometimes they depend on those driver opportunities. There's going to be thousands of those available to them, so thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like my name added to the legislation.
Yes, absolutely. The rules have been suspended, and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
The ayes have it. This ordinance passes 10 to 1. Roll call. Bolden?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Connor? Davis?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittrick?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
And Wilson? The ordinance passes 10 to 1. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, December 8th, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to place a digital outdoor advertising display on McIntosh Avenue adjacent to Interstate 277. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 22nd and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning November 19th. Ms. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Kenjo Outdoor Advertising is requesting permission to place an outdoor advertising display or billboard to a height of 65 feet at this location. Double-sided V-shaped billboard would be located approximately 910 feet east of the I-76 overpass. The digital panels, each measuring 48 feet by 14 feet in height for 672 square feet, would be supported by a steel monopole column, 48 inches in diameter. Structure would reach an overall height of 65 feet. The zoning code establishes the development requirements for advertising displays permitted as a conditional use, and this proposal meets most of the requirements. The proposed display would be located roughly 810 feet west of the closest of the, of two newly placed billboards on the opposite side of I-277. This distance is approximately 100 feet more than the distance between the two previously approved billboards. The proposed height would be consistent with the approved heights of several recently approved displays and should not impose on the area, surrounding area. The precedent has been established allowing similar billboards in proximity to interstate highways and other expressways. The displays feature automatic brightness adjustment and comply with lighting standards endorsed by the International Sign Association and Outdoor Advertising Association of America. Proposed externally illuminated digital advertising display is along a well-traveled highway at a height of 65 feet and digital faces oriented toward the highway. The billboard should not impose on the neighboring uses and should contribute to a vibrant business environment by providing an efficient means for local businesses to communicate with consumers. And both the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Going to ask all those who wish to speak in favor or against, if you'll please stand at this time. If you're joining us online, just going to ask that you unmute yourselves so that you may be sworn in by our clerk. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Thank you. And so we'll begin with those who wish to speak in favor.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dan Nielsen. Address is 928 Haverhill Drive, Troy, Ohio. I'm the applicant on behalf of Kenjo Outdoor Advertising. A lot of you heard my conversation this morning, but again, we've done a ton of business in the area with roofers, plumbers, colleges, electricians, excavators. One of our excavators actually owns the land that I'm applying for this application on. A couple of conversations, or a couple of questions came up this afternoon regarding water, power, and access, and I hope I addressed them at least a little bit this afternoon, but I wanted to just quickly, you know, talk about them again. So the properties, sorry, our sign foundation is only 144 square feet, 12-foot by 12-foot, and then 12 feet deep. The property that it's going on is actually eight acres, and we have a wetland permit through FEMA or the Army Corps of Engineers. I would, you know, we're only disturbing, I don't know what percentage it is, but it's micro, a micro percentage. And then a lot of the, you know, contiguous properties or, you know, properties nearby, it's five acres and then another 24 acres to the east that have a, you know, I, I would hope that that area is kind of the water concern, if there is water concerns. I, I can't speak to it maybe, you know, as, as well as he can, but we're only disturbing 144 square feet, so I don't, I don't think we're adding or, you know, negatively impacting the water flow in the area. Power, we're going to come, there's actually decent existing power. It's from Hope and Kohler all the way down McIntosh Ave. There's some transformers and some overhead poles. We'll probably go underground to our sign. Again, almost no land disturbance, but just wanted to address that. And then access, like I said this afternoon, we're going to extend, there's an existing drive to the, he kind of runs a rock gravel dirt business there. We're going to extend the existing drive 300 feet to the agreed-upon location with the Army Corps of Engineers in, in the area to not disturb any water flow. But other than that, like I said, there's no disturbance light-wise to any residential neigh, you know, any residential houses. They're not going to notice anything because it's basically surrounded by a scrapyard, a pallet manufacturing yard, obviously the interstate. So we, we feel it's a great location for us. We've done well in Akron, and I hope you guys, you know, give us approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll now move to those who wish to speak against. I think we have someone online.
Yes. My name is Jason Prosser. Address is 7828 Street Northwest, Barberton, Ohio. My biggest concern is the water flow has been disrupted on this property. The extension of this access road, I believe, is either going across or very close to a drainage ditch that no longer drains. The flooding has flooded multiple properties that surround the property this sign is going on. I have contacted Army Corps of Engineers, City of Akron, some county engineer, Akron Engineering. Nobody has come out to see the problem, I believe. Nobody's really voiced it until now. My mother was in the Beacon Journal in 2014 with her yard and house underwater, and nothing still was done. The sign is not the biggest issue that I'm concerned of. It's the amount of work and land change to put it in and the disruption of water flow that is already a problem.
Jason, thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, we have one more?
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. Can you please stand so you can be sworn in by our clerk? Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's John Hosterman. I currently live at 987 West Water Road, Akron, Ohio, 44314. I have property back there on Kohler Avenue that butts up to where this sign is going to be placed. I also have a concern with what Jason's saying. Apparently, from the whole neighborhood that I've, I've heard from and the residents, all that property all floods out. I guess the owner who owns it, Butch, he has changed the land back there and has removed all the trees back there that would block the bark flow. So my concern is my property completely floods out. I can't mow my property half of the summer, if not more. So my concern is what will they be doing back there on digging and moving trees around and what trees are left? So that's my concern. The sign's not much of an issue. I mean, it is a little bit of a eyesore. I constantly see the two signs that are already placed from the other side of 277 because I live on Water Road. It's kind of a nuisance, but I mean, if the sign's being, if the sign has to be built for advertisement, I don't think there's much advertisement in that area of businesses. But I would say that, that's my concern. I'm concerned about where the power would be placed because I have property back there. There's no McIntosh. McIntosh is only on one side of the road, and it comes off of Hope. You have to go down Hope to go to McIntosh. So my concern is how do you get from in and out of McIntosh to put power back there? And then all the land changing that will be issued? Because it's, it's actually marshland, and it's all back there. So it's not really diggable. So I'm, want to know how structurally safe the sign would be if they did dig it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And so at this time, we're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
Thank you. I'd like to pull the committee to refer this item. Connor?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Committee wishes to refer this.
Thank you. This item will be referred. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, December 8th, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to retain a solid fence within the Emmons Avenue and Ardendale Avenue setbacks at 110 Emmons Avenue. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 22nd and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning November 19th. Ms. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Garrett Lott is requesting permission to retain a solid six-feet-tall fence in the front and side yards within 10 inches of the Emmons Avenue right-of-way and nine feet six inches from the Ardendale Avenue right-of-way. Per the Akron, the petitioner was cited in August of this year based upon a neighborhood complaint. Per the Akron zoning code, a six-feet fully-screened fence can be built up to the building line or 20 feet back from the property line, whichever is closer. At this address, the building line is 10 feet along Emmons Avenue and 20 feet along Ardendale Avenue. The purpose of setting a fully-screened fence over 30 inches tall at or behind the required setbacks is to provide for safe movement of both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. The location of the fence at this corner property could create blind spots for pedestrians and vehicles. This property is also one block south of Windermere Community Learning Center, and a high volume of vehicles and pedestrians use the street to access the school daily. Petitioner's property is large, and adherence to the established fence setback still would provide ample open space and would not create a hardship. As such, the planning staff recommends that the six-feet fence conform to the zoning code fence regulations by either moving the fence back to conform to the setbacks or reduce the height of the fence to 30 inches to provide adequate vision clearance for safe movement of pedestrians and vehicles, as well as promoting safe neighborhoods. And the planning staff and planning commission recommend disapproval of the request to retain the fence at this current location. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak in favor or against? We're just going to ask that you be sworn in by our clerk. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Garrett Lott again, 110 Emmons Avenue, constructor of the fence. Didn't really prepare a second speech. I presented most of the facts I had on the issue earlier in the day at the one o'clock meeting. Just one other point I'd like to bring up is being on the corner lot there, I've, you know, came neighborly with people on both sides of the streets along Emmons and Ardendale Avenue, and everyone I've talked to, asked about the fence, have been in complete support of it. Most, most of them have been residents there for over 30 years, you know, they've seen the neighborhood come and go, grow, you know, accordingly, and not one of them has presented any issue with the fence. Most of them are very impressed with the quality of it and how much care I've taken of the property since I've been there, since about April. This property wasn't really maintained properly since about the 90s when the previous owner, the father of the house, was still alive. It's just kind of been falling apart and disrepair, you know, for the past 20 years about. And if anyone's familiar with the neighborhood, it's not consistent, you know, elevation at all, like there's not a single flat spot in my yard or along the streets passing by. So I believe that shortening the fence to 30 inches wouldn't make any difference, you know, it might be 30 inches from where you're looking at it, but it goes all the way up the hill, so it's, you know, might as well be a 10-foot tall fence. It's not going to make any difference there. I presented most of my case, happy to answer any questions or any concerns, but I said I care about the safety of this neighborhood and this property and tend to do everything I can to maintain it to the best of my ability for as long as I'm there.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Connor? Boys?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Report of the committee is favorable, and we're asking for suspension of the rules?
Are there any objections to suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. I know the ward council representative is in favor of this. Don't know if he has any comments or not. We did hear comments from the ward council person this afternoon in favor, so we're recommending approval this evening. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The rules have been suspended, and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. This ordinance passes 11 to 0. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, December 8th, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to retain a three-unit apartment house at 151 Ruckell Road. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 22nd and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning November 19th. Ms. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Caitlin Kozinski wishes to retain the property as a three-unit apartment use. However, this property is considered a legal non-conforming two-family. The structure built in 1924 currently contains three apartments. Petitioner purchased the property in October of this year under the impression it had always been a legal non-conforming three-unit dwelling. The two-story dwelling provides access to two of the units from the front porch, and one apartment has access through a rear door. Structure was inspected by Akron's Housing Division under the prior owner, and it was found that it was necessary to upgrade the units so that they each have a separate electrical panel. The property contains ample space in the rear yard to provide required three parking spots. Petitioner has indicated she will make the necessary changes to the property into compliance with the Akron Housing Code. The amount of off-street parking exceeds code requirements. Other two and multifamily dwellings exist within the immediate neighborhood, and the additional third unit on this large property will not significantly increase density while continuing to provide needed housing. The retention of this three-family apartment use should not have a negative impact on this Goodyear Heights neighborhood, and the both planning staff and planning commission recommend approval, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here in chambers or online who wishes to speak in favor or against? We did also have one person sign up to join remotely, and she is here. Caitlin Kozinski. We did also have one person sign up to join remotely and she is here. Caitlin Kozinski, are you able to start your video so that you can be sworn in?
Hi, I'm here.
Thank you. Can you please raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll begin with those who wish to speak in favor.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Zwissler, 1449 Berkshire Road in Stowe. I am the previous owner of 151 Ruckel Road. I just wanted to reiterate my advocacy for a legal non-conforming three-unit. Again, under my ownership, the property had been fully occupied and it is currently fully occupied under the new owners. And again, the third unit is occupied by, by an elderly woman. And she, she does receive social security income. So it would be most beneficial to have the property remain as is.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Do we have anyone wishing to speak against? Caitlin, did you want to weigh in? We want to give you an opportunity if you choose to. I don't know if you can hear us.
Yeah, I know, I can hear you. Yeah. So just to reiterate what Chris said, when I got the property in October, we were both under the assumption that it was a conforming triplex. And then afterwards, we found out that it wasn't. So we would like to keep the property as a triplex as it has been for years because the people that have been there have been there for years. And like he said, one of the main, the third floor tenant is an elderly woman on social security.
Caitlin, thank you so much. At this time, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
Like to pull the committee for a favorable report. Sharon Connor? Peter Boyes?
Aye.
Johnny Hannah?
Aye.
Are the committees favorable? And we're asking for passage this evening.
Are there any objections to suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you. Sharon Connor is the ward council person, is in favor of it, testified as such this afternoon, so recommend approval.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 11 to zero. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the council of the city of Akron on Monday, December 8th, 2025 during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to construct a gas station, convenience store, two-bay car wash, and truck parking area at 1805 East Market Street. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 22nd and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning November 19th.
Ms. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Campbell Oil is requesting permission to rebuild a legal non-conforming gas station and convenience store and construct a detached two-bay car wash. The current Marathon Gas Station and Bell Store Convenience Store, Azteca Restaurant, and the vacant former Ultracoat Building will be razed. The current 2,000-square-foot gas station and convenience store with attached Fuel Island canopies will be replaced with a 5,000-square-foot building located near the original footprint. Building materials will consist of masonry, cement, base brick, and horizontal siding in earth-toned colors, plus a red standing seam roof. Storefront windows and the main entrance doors will be along the south and east elevations. The gas station and convenience store will be open 24 hours a day, but the interior will only be accessible from 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM. After-hours customers will use a pass-through drawer on the west side of the building. The gas station and convenience store will be surrounded by 47 parking spaces. The canopy to the east of the building will cover four diesel fuel dispensers. The canopy to the west of the building will cover six fuel dispensers. The proposed 40 feet in width easternmost curb cut will provide ingress-only access to the diesel fuel dispensers. The westernmost curb cut will be the same width, but will be egress-only. The wider curb cuts are necessary to accommodate semi-truck traffic. The two-middle curb cuts are designed for passenger vehicles and will each be 30 feet in width. Two-bay production line car wash building constructed of matching building materials will be located over 60 feet west of the gas fuel station fuel canopy. Vehicles will enter the building from the north and exit to the south. West of the car wash will be 12 paved, 12-bay paved parking area for tractor trailers. A five-foot-in-depth double-staggered row of bushes will run the street frontage with clusters of bushes scattered throughout the interior. Petitioner has stated they will replace any missing street trees. The current gas station and convenience store is undersized and the current flow of traffic often creates congestion. Proposed rebuild and expansion provides a more efficient traffic flow by separating the diesel and gasoline fueling areas and providing ample parking for customers. Traffic engineering has reviewed the proposal and recommends approval. The area west of Azteca has always been utilized as truck parking for several decades, but the proposed layout will make this parking area more organized and attractive. The proposed two-bay car wash will provide needed services for residents. Landscaping and spacing between structures and uses will promote an attractive and efficient development. Additionally, the raising of older structures and replacing them with modern buildings will be an improvement. The planning staff and planning commission recommend approval, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. I do believe we have some individuals online. If you'll just please unmute yourselves so that you can be sworn in by our clerk.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
And you guys can begin.
Yeah, my name is JP Phillips from Campbell Oil Company, Bell Stores, 797 Hills and Dales Road, Maslin, Ohio. I'm the director of construction for Campbell Oil, and I just want to thank the staff so far getting us to this point in the process. We're very excited. We've owned this location for going on 40 years, and we're excited to upgrade the services we can provide the area, as well as, as was mentioned in the briefing, just clean up our section of Market Street. So be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you so much. Mitchell, do you have any other comments you'd like to add? Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else wishing to speak in favor or against, we'll close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
Like to pull the committee for a favorable report. Connor?
Aye.
Boyes?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Are the committees favorable? Asking for passage.
Thank you. Any objections on suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I know, again, Sharon Connor is in favor of this. And this is what we see from time to time in these types of facilities where they refresh. It sounds as though that they're going to expand. And so we're looking forward to this and appreciate all the work everyone's put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 11 to zero. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the council of the city of Akron on Monday, December 8th, 2025 during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to place oversized directional wayfinding signage within the building line setback at 350 Opportunity Parkway. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 22nd and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October, I'm sorry, November 19th.
Thank you. Ms. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. The Akron Canton Regional Food Bank is requesting permission to place five destination directional ground signs within the setback. The five directional signs would be placed at each entrance along Dart Avenue and Opportunity Parkway. Each would be placed five to seven feet from the public right-of-way and measure five feet in height by 2.2 feet in width for an area of 11 square feet. It would be constructed of double-sided aluminum with paint and computer-cut vinyl graphics. Each sign face will read Akron Canton Regional Food Bank in white lettering along with the organization's logo on a red background. The petitioner has stated the location can create a challenge to provide adequately visible signage for this busy facility. There are a number of donors, customers, and volunteers, all in various vehicles of heights and sizes. These signs are a suitable solution for this vital community service to ensure an efficient circulation of traffic and utilization of space without being obtrusive or adversely affecting the surrounding neighborhood. And as such, both planning staff and planning commission recommend approval, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone online wishing to speak in favor or against? Seeing and hearing none, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
Like to pull the committee for a favorable report. Connor?
Aye.
Boyes?
Aye.
Hannah?
Are the committees favorable? Asking for passage.
Thank you. Any objections to suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, this is a valuable community asset, but in terms of zoning, I know that it's been recommended for approval, so it fits within the code system. So we're hoping to pass it this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 11 to zero.
If there's nothing else coming before this body, meeting adjourned.
Council will meet in regular session at 6:30. Thank you.